Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Milton. It's our honor tonight to have Remco Bromlett, Chaplain for the City of Milton Police and Fire, to do our invitation.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Our Father in Heaven, while the air is cold outside, our hearts are warm inside as we pass to pray. In the words of the Prophet Isaiah, "You promised to keep him in perfect peace whose mind is stayed on You." And we receive that tonight, both as a promise and as an invitation. And so, we resolve to involve You in all that we do, our work, our service to the community. And in that vein, we pray that You guide the minds and the decisions of the council tonight, and the work of the city staff that is gathered here as well. Bless those that work for the city on a day-to-day basis. We pray for Your peace upon the city. I've been troubled by the many calls that the police are receiving to respond to domestic disturbances in the City of Milton. And we pray for peace in our families, peace in the homes of our city, and favor on all that call this town home. We ask these things in Your name. Amen.
I'd like to call the regular meeting in the Milton City Council for Wednesday, February 18th, 2015 to order. Will the City Clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor, Pro-Tam, and Council. I'll be happy to call a roll for the February 18th, 2015 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The City Council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Pro-Tam Karen Thurmond.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Kuntz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Moritz.
Here.
Mayor Joe Lockwood is absent for the record. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
Our next item this evening is the approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 15-043.
I would like to defer the social media policy to the March 9th work session and add an executive session to discuss land acquisition. Does anyone else have any other agenda item changes?
No.
Is there a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion to approve what you just said.
I'll second that.
A motion is made by Councilmember Kuntz and seconded by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposition. The next item is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any general public comments.
Okay, then I'm going to forego reading the rules on public comment. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Will the City Clerk sound the items?
Our first item this evening is approval of the February 2nd, 2015 City Council Regular Minutes. Agenda Item Number 15-044. Next, approval of the financial statements for the period ending December 2014. Agenda Item Number 15-045. Agenda Item Number 15-046 has been deferred to the March 9th work session for discussion. Our final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Prime Contractors, Inc., for renovation services at Fire Station 41. This is Agenda Item Number 15-047.
Is there a motion and a second for the consent agenda as presented?
I agree that we accept the consent agenda as read by the City Clerk. Second.
There is a motion made by Councilmember Longoria and seconded by Councilmember Moritz. All in favor?
Aye.
There is no opposition. There are no items under reports and presentations or first presentation. Will the City Clerk please sound the items under public hearing?
This is an alcohol beverage license application in consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Sterling Arcade, Inc., doing business as Paradise Boney Point, located at 5310-D Windward Parkway, Milton, Georgia 3004. This is Agenda Item Number 15-031. Ms. Stacy English.
Good evening. This item, if you recall, was on a previous agenda that we had it removed to defer to this agenda because of the sign placement is not placed in the right location. And so, the applicant is now in compliance with everything, all the requirements of the city, and the staff recommends approval of this. This is simply a change of ownership.
Is there any public comment on this item?
There is not.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed. Is there any council discussion? Is there a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 15-031.
Second.
A motion is made by Councilmember Hewitt and seconded by Councilmember Longoria. We have a motion to approve the alcohol beverage license to Sterling Arcade, Inc., doing business as Paradise Boney Point, located at 5310-D Windward Parkway, Milton, Georgia 30004. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to the zoning agenda, will the City Clerk please read the zoning rules and sound the first item?
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant, and although speaking in support of an application, will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following their presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The City Clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the City Clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. Before beginning your presentation or comment, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization if applicable. The Planning Commission has heard the rezoning agenda items, and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the Community Development Department to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made, within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government which will consider this application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respected local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of U-14-03, VC-14-03, 14250 Birmingham Highway by Lauren Dillon, to operate an artist studio, Section 64-1843, within an existing building and to request a concurrent variance to allow outside storage, Section 64-1843B1. This is Agenda Item Number 15-040. First presentation was at the February 2nd, 2015 regular city council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Pro-Tam, and members of the city council. The first slide before you is an aerial photograph that shows the property under consideration this evening. The current zoning for this property is AG1. The future land use map shows the future land use for this property to be low-density residential. This is the site plan that was submitted on October 1st, 2014, which shows the existing house as well as the existing studio to the rear. Subject Site. The subject site is zone AG1 and developed with a 4,988 square foot single-family residence in a 3,296 square foot metal shop building and other accessory structures built on 7.912 acres. The site is heavily vegetated with Chicken Creek as the north property line. The applicant seeks a use permit for an artist studio within the existing 3,296 square foot metal building. The applicant is requesting a concurrent variance to allow outside storage. The intent is to preserve the agricultural customs of the area as the artist uses traditional blacksmithing techniques to create his artwork. Staff undertook a site plan analysis, and essentially, the site met all of the standards with the exception of number one, under outside storage. And accordingly, the applicant is requesting a concurrent variance for this. And in terms of the concurrent variance to allow outside storage, the proposed site plan indicates outside storage on the north side of the workshop building, which would keep the materials out of sight. And as you face the studio, this would be the area to the right. There is heavy vegetation on the site, and the property is higher in elevation and therefore cannot be seen. Staff's opinion that this request meets the following considerations for the concurrent variance. One, relief if granted would not offend the spirit or intend of the zoning ordinance. Two, there are such extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property that the literal or strict application of the zoning ordinance would create an unnecessary hardship. Three, relief if granted would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good. Therefore, staff recommends that VC-14-03 be approved. Under Use Permit Standards Number Two, that shall not generate traffic, sound, smell, vibration, light, or dust that is offensive so as to constitute a nuisance. Staff notes that during the CZIM meeting and the DRB meeting, the adjacent property owner to the south was in attendance, stating that they experienced vibrations within their home while the applicant's hammer was in operation. Based on this input, the DRB recommended that the applicant install additional insulation to the building to allow staff to conduct sound readings. Since the time of that DRB meeting in November, the applicant installed additional insulation on the south wall of the workshop and pads to decrease the vibration. Sound tests were conducted by city staff at two locations on the property line. In both instances, the DVA decibel level did not exceed the allowable 65 DVA at the property line. In addition, staff did not feel any vibrations at those same locations while the hammer was in operation. Therefore, to staff's opinion that the operation of the equipment used by the applicant does not generate traffic, sound, smell, vibration, light, or dust that is offensive so as to constitute a nuisance. Continuing with Use Permit Standards 3H, if applicable, hours for customers to visit the studio and delivery shall be limited to 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. The applicant has submitted the following regarding hours of operation. Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 6:00 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 to 6:00 p.m. And deliveries as noted in the chart above. And the proposed hours during the weekdays and weekends are longer than the Use Permit Standards permit. Therefore, staff recommends that the hours of operation be limited to 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, and 12:00 noon to 5:00 p.m. on Sunday. Terms of public involvement, at the CZIM meeting, which was held on October 28, 2014, the applicant was present. There were five people also in attendance at the meeting, and the following issues were brought up. One, hours of operation. Two, noise level of the work in the shop. And three, vibration from the operation of the work in the shop. The Milton Design Review Board had a courtesy review on November 4th, and the following comments were made at the meeting. And amongst those were that they suggested that the applicant be deferred until a definitive answer was ascertained as to what the noise levels were. Applicant was requested to have the noise vibration levels tested and returned to the DRB for the January meeting. At the DRB January meeting, the following comments were made. That the applicant added padding under the hammer and added insulation to the building. Staff observed the sound tests while the equipment was in operation. The noise level generated by the equipment in operation is less than the city maximums as measured at the property lines. Also, staff encountered no vibration from the machinery. Therefore, staff has met the Design Review Board's request. I'm sorry, that the applicant has met the Design Review Board's request. Under Use Permit Considerations, one, is it consistent with land use or economic development plans? Yes, the staff feels that it is. Under two, compatibility with adjacent uses. In the staff's opinion, the proposed artist studio is compatible with adjacent and nearby properties if approved with the recommended conditions. Three, under parking, the required number of parking spaces is one space per 1,000 square feet. Based on this requirement, a total of three parking spaces are required, and there is sufficient space to provide these. Four, hours and manner of operation. The proposed hours during the weekdays and weekends are longer than the Use Permit Standards permit and are not conducive to the surrounding area. Therefore, staff recommends the following. Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00. Saturday, 10:00 to 5:00. Sunday, 12:00 noon to 5:00. Conclusion. If approved with the recommended conditions, the proposed artist studio is consistent with the City of Milton 2030 future land use plan and policies. Therefore, staff recommends U-14-03 be approved conditional, and VC-14-03 be approved conditional. In addition, the Planning Commission did review this application at their meeting on January 29th, and they approved both the Use Permit application as well as the concurrent variance application. So, in terms of recommended conditions, they are as follows. A, an artist studio within the existing 3,296 square foot building. B, the hours of operation shall be the following. Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00. Saturday, 10:00 to 5:00. And Sunday, 12:00 to 5:00. The hours of delivery shall be the following. Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00. Two, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following, to the site plan received by the Community Development Department on October 1st, 2014. Three, to the owner's agreement to the following site development considerations. To allow outside storage on the north side of the existing 3,296 square foot building as depicted on the site plan received by the Community Development Department on October 1st. Four, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following. A, access to the sites shall be subject to the approval of Milton Public Works Department and Georgia Department of Transportation. Also, driveway shall meet required intersection site distance, and driveway shall be improved within the right-of-way as required by the Georgia DOT. And that is my presentation.
Are there any questions of staff?
Just one. We had our field trip there a while back. We're talking about that storage facility. That's where they're working on the outside artistic equipment out there. I think he had a piece that was out there when we were there for the field trip. That's what we're talking about on the north side of that shed, right?
Yes.
Okay, just to make sure.
Yes. And I concur with, yes, okay. Just want to make sure.
Any other questions of staff? First, we're going to hear from all those speaking in support of U-14-03, VC-14-03.
Our first comment comes from Scott Reese.
Madam Mayor, Pro-Tam, members of council, I'm Scott Reese, Bromley Low Reese and Associates, doing business at 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia 30004. I'm here tonight representing the Dillons in their application for a use permit for an artist studio on their property located on Birmingham Highway. Staff, I think, has done an excellent job of detailing everything. Really don't feel like spending your time or my time rehashing everything. The main point is, it is a business that we feel completely fits within the special use permit idea of creating businesses that preserve, you know, some spectrum of Milton's rural past. It's non-retail. There's not going to be many people at all that come in there. It's kind of a unique and special design as far as the sculptures and the railings that he creates. A very small percentage of his work is the, I guess, the hammering of the raw material, probably less than 5%. The majority of his time is in design and welding and fabrication, which doesn't create any of the nuisances that may have been brought up in the past. We feel like we've addressed any of the neighbors' concerns. The noise and vibration does not exceed. It's within the allowable limits. The variance, the request on it, the material that's involved in this process is not conducive to inside storage. I mean, metal rods and base material, it just doesn't fit. So, we've created this area, or designated it, that's shielded by the building itself from any of the neighbors, and then there are 500 or 600 feet of wooded side up to Chicken Creek. So, it's completely sheltered from any other owners. So, we feel like we've addressed that. So, just finally, we just feel like this is a proper use for this property, a business that meets the city designation of creating businesses with economic opportunity that create a diverse and rural environment in the City of Milton. You know, it's just another way to preserve green space instead of having one house and one acre. I'm going to leave the rest of my time to answer any questions or rebuttal. Thank you for your time.
Our next comment this evening comes from Lauren Dillon.
Ms. Dillon is the applicant. She'll just answer any questions if...
Thank you.
That is all the public comments we have in support, and we do not have any against.
Okay. You want to use any additional time?
No, ma'am. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
The public hearing is now closed. Are there any questions for the applicant?
My only question was, obviously, there were conditions that were recommended. Are those conditions acceptable?
Yes.
For the applicant, okay.
Any additional questions?
If that's okay, I'll make a motion. Well, Mayor Pro-Tam, I'd like to make a motion that we approve U-4-03 VC-1403 for 14250 Birmingham Highway by Lauren Dillon to operate an artist studio within an existing building and to request a concurrent variance to allow outside storage. Agenda Item Number 15-040.
Seconded with the addition that U-14-03 is approved conditionally, and VC-1403 is approved as presented.
Agreed.
You're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Kuntz and seconded by Councilmember Luss for to approve the motion with the recommended conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
There is no opposition? Motion carries. Will the City Clerk please sound the next zoning item?
Our next zoning item is consideration of ZM-15-01, 13895 Hopewell Road by Jeff Runner, to modify conditions 2A to include a 40-by-60 pavilion on the site, and to modify condition 1C to increase the number of guests from 150 to 250. Agenda Item Number 15-041. First presentation was heard at the February 2nd regularly City Council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Our second application tonight, Madam Mayor, Pro-Tam, is shown. The property is shown in red on the aerial photo in front of you. The current zoning of that property is AG1, and this is the revised site plan that was submitted to us January 6, 2015. Some pictures of the property. This is approximate location of the proposed pavilion on the west side of the house. In terms of background and history, the mayor and city council approved a use permit for an event facility in January 2014. The proposed event facility allowed only the existing structures and no other structures to be built or enlarged. The maximum number of guests permitted was 150. Since the time of the approved use permit, Mr. Runner has been working with city staff to design the necessary sprinkler system within the large house that is to be utilized as the primary area for events. There was no one from the community in attendance at the CZIM on January 26, 2015. There's a requested modifications are to modify condition 2A to include a 40-by-60 pavilion on the site plan, approved pursuant to U-13-04 on January 22, 2014. The applicant has requested in the letter of intent dated January 19, 2015, to replace the existing, the original site plan approved pursuant to U-13-04 with a revised site plan, submitted to the Community Development Department on January 6. The site plan proposes to include a 40-foot-by-60-foot pavilion. The applicant has stated the following reasons for the change in the letter of intent, which is as follows. Although our plans are to have most of the events inside the house, we do plan to allow a few outside events. We would rather build a nice-looking pavilion in which to hold the outside events rather than erect tents. Additionally, we have discovered that if we serve food in the house, then we have to install a full commercial sprinkler system, which is very expensive and requires extensive modifications to the house. If we don't serve food, then a residential system in the assembly areas are all that is required. This system is far less expensive, utilizes the existing water system, and is not in any way near as intrusive to the facility. For those events in the house that will be serving food, the food will be served in the pavilion, and then the rest of the event will be held inside the house. Proposed condition 2A to the revised site plan received by the Community Development Department in 2015. Said site plan is conceptual only and must meet or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance. All other applicable city ordinances and these conditions provide for the approval of a land disturbance permit. The proposed modifications, I'm sorry, the requested modifications continue. The proposed pavilion with no walls located between the house and Hopewell Road with the additional pasture between the pavilion and Hopewell Road, also owned by Mr. Runner, should not have a negative impact on the Bethany Oaks subdivision located further to the east. In addition, by building a permanent structure and not utilizing tents, the overall appearance of the site will be maintained. Therefore, staff recommends that condition 2A be approved to include a pavilion as depicted on the revised site plan submitted January 6, 2015. Also, the request to modify condition 1C to increase the number of guests from 150 to 250. The applicant has requested in the letter of intent to increase the number of guests from 150 to 250. The applicant has stated the following reasons for the change in his letter of intent. During the hearing for the original application, we stated that an event with 150 to 160 people was the maximum size we would like to host on our property. However, when speaking with prospective clients, we have discovered that many of them have an invitation list of around 200 people. Even though we are well aware that not everyone invited actually attends, we are not comfortable hosting the event that could lead to a violation of the use permit. Therefore, even though our target attendance is not to exceed 150 to 160 people, we would like to have the use permit increased to legally allow 250. Proposed condition 1C, the number of guests shall not exceed 250 people for a single event. Staff has evaluated the applicant's request Staff has evaluated the applicant's request to increase the number from 150 to 250 for a single event. Based on the applicant's parking plan submitted with the original use permit, the site can accommodate between 88 and 106 parking spaces. This meets the required number of spaces of 72 based on the largest assembly place without fixed seating. The bore room within the house is approximately 2,600 square feet, and the proposed pavilion is 2,400 square feet in size. In a staff's opinion, that granted the requested 250 guest limit would pose a potential parking problem on the site based on the fact that there are a maximum of 106 parking spaces. Practically, one assumes that there are a minimum of two guests per car, and sometimes attendees will attend without a plus-one. In addition, the applicant will be required to adhere to the existing conditions pursuant to U-13-04 that requires artificial sound emitting from the facility shall cease at 10:00 p.m., and artificial sound shall not be, artificial sound shall be allowed only on the west side of the property. Based on the parking issue, staff recommends the number of guests be increased from the existing 150 to 200. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of condition 1C to indicate 200 guests. So, recommended conditions. Should the mayor and city council approve the petition, the recommended conditions for U-13-04 should be revised to read as follows. To the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows. See, the number of guests shall not exceed 200 people for a single event. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following, to the revised site plan received by the Community Development Department on January 6, 2015. And that is the site plan, of course. That includes the pavilion. And that is my presentation. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions of staff?
Kathy, I'm looking at the site plan here, and I don't, I don't see where the pavilion's located.
It's, um...
Right there. There's the house. It's on the electronic board. It should come across as...
It's on the left.
That was, that's what, this is, it's not on this one. This is what was, so it would be on the, it's that little green.
It's on the west side. It's sort of a solid rectangle.
So, it's actually in front of the house.
Uh, yes, in a sense, yes.
Okay, what's the setback? From the road?
The, why don't you, would you answer, Robin? Robin will respond.
Earlier this year, Mr. Runner came before the Board of Zoning Appeals to get a variance to reduce the setback, and so that already is in place.
Any further questions of staff?
Chris, do we have any record in the however many months it's been since we approved the original special use permit, complaints, or any recorded violations of any of the restrictions to the use permit?
He hasn't operated. He hasn't started yet.
Oh, so...
Have we had any...
So, there hasn't been anything?
I've heard about it. That doesn't mean there wasn't one, but nothing, nothing rings a bell.
Oh, I thought I remember the fact that there was, there was stuff already going on, and so we were trying to catch up with...
That's a good question for Mr. Runner.
Okay. All right, I'll hold on to that. I'll hold on to that then. Kathy, there was a note in the front that was related to one of the hardships, or not hardships, but one of the conditions, the issues that caused him to make one of these requests was related to food preparation, or just serving food.
Yes.
I tend to think of those two things as being different. Is the issue that he can't serve food inside without the sprinkler system, or he can't prepare food inside without the sprinkler system?
We were trying to get clarification from the fire marshal on that, but it's my understanding that food, hot food cannot be, not only not prepared, but not served inside. That's why he wants to serve the food in the pavilion. Otherwise, it kicks in the requirement that he have a commercial sprinkler system as opposed to a residential, without the appearance of food in that existing house.
And they convert it to food in once they have it. I guess that's a question.
I, I think that's a fine line between if the food is served in the pavilion, can they walk it into the house? Or is it, they're restricted from actually serving food within the house? And I think that's probably a good question for the applicant to better understand that restriction.
I'll say that one too then.
Yes. They're good questions, however.
Getting back on the sprinkler issue then, am I to believe that they still have to put a residential system in there?
That is what he's, he would like to do, is put in a residential as opposed to the commercial. It's less intrusive, and that's why the pavilion has come into being.
Rick?
An FPA-13.
I'm working to get the fire marshal on the phone. He's in West Virginia.
Yeah, we tried earlier.
We've been reaching out to him this afternoon.
I'll see if I can't shoot a message that he'll respond to.
And that was probably a question maybe for, for the fire chief, is, or fire marshal, what, what are the restrictions as far as the food? Because I think that's some, that's kind of material to what decision we're making here, and what type of events you could actually hold.
Right. And, and the staff actually came up with, is, is drink a food as well, or not? Can you serve liquor in there? So, we were trying, we were trying to get clarification from the fire marshal. He's just out of pocket.
I'll wait on Matt to respond. I know I've gotten an email from him on this topic. It's been months ago, but I know that I've got a more thorough description from him, so I'll go, I'll go find that, pull that back. So, just hold that topic for a couple minutes, if you don't mind. I'll see if we can get better clarification.
Do we have any other questions of staff? First, we'll hear from all those speaking in support of ZM-15-01.
Our first comment comes from Mr. Jeff Runner.
Mayor, city council members, I hate to be in front of you again, but here we are.
Can you state your name and address just for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jeff Runner, 13895 Hopewell Road, Milton, Georgia. The whole variance for the, for the pavilion is, when we showed it originally, we talked about a future, maybe having a pavilion. You know, that's something we're going to make, look at down in the future, but we showed it on our parking plan rather than on our site plan. Went ahead and we got a variance, get the setbacks reduced. That was granted. We were sitting down with the fire marshal and the mayor and the Community Development Department, and we're talking about ways to, to keep from having to put a full-blown commercial system, or commercial sprinkler system into the house. He pointed out that if we weren't serving food, and there's some question as to what serving food meant, the actual state law says that if, if it's intended for food consumption, then it has to have a commercial sprinkler system. If it's not intended for food consumption, then it can go with something lesser, depending on what the use is. So, we aren't, in our estimation, we aren't intended for food consumption. We're intended to be an events facility at which food may also be consumed. Talking with the state fire marshal, they agree that the, the code or the law is written, that's really supposed to be for restaurants. But, it's kind, kind of, kind of a gray area, so the fire marshal for the city of Milton, he interprets it to be any food that's consumed. Now, we, I brought up, he said it's because people sitting at a table eating would be slower to evacuate the facility than someone, someone who's just sitting at the table watching or playing games or whatever. He didn't quite understand it. We don't really understand it. I mean, they could be served, I, I even asked him, I said, so we can be serving alcohol there, they could be sitting there drinking, playing cards, and that's not an issue. And he says, no, it's, it's the actual food consumption that triggers it. So, and he also said, we could serve it anywhere else on the property, and they can carry it in. We can't stop them from carrying it into the facility, but we, you know, it can't be served there in, in the house. So, we said, well, okay, well, we've already got a variance for the pavilion, we'll just go ahead and build a, build a pavilion. And that's when Robin brought up, well, wait a minute, the pavilion isn't on, on your site plan. But, we had it on the parking plan, it's all part of that packet before, but we didn't have it on the right site plan. So, this is to correct that and put it on, onto the site plan. As far as the increasing the number of occupants from 150 to 250, we've run into a number of people who, they would like to invite somewhere around 200, they think they'll get 175, 150, 160, somewhere in that range, but they aren't going to, they're, everyone's positive they're not going to get 100% attendance, but we aren't comfortable booking anything that would possibly put us in violation of what, what we had agreed to. I'll reserve the rest of the time for any rebuttal or any questions.
Are there any other athletes wishing to speak in favor?
We have two in support, and these individuals could not make the meeting this evening, so I will read their comments into the record. The first comes from Mr. Tom Leonard, 13840 Bethany Oaks Point, Milton, Georgia. Our property backs up to the Jeff Runner's property. I want to write this letter to show we fully support the use of the house as an events facility, and we support the proposed variances as being requested by Jeff Runner. The Runners have always been very careful to not be a disturbance to the neighbors. Even though we know they have held a number of events there, they were so quiet, we didn't even know they had occurred. Any disturbances we get in this neighborhood come from Cambridge High School and Kingsbridge Academy. They are so loud, we can hear every event they have. Thank you for your consideration. And that's from Mr. Tom Leonard. The next comment comes from Brent and Chrissy Reeves, 15030 Freemanville Road, Milton, Georgia. As a resident of Milton, I strongly encourage the committee to approve the request by the Runners for the Yellow House Farm Events Facility to serve 250. This facility is an asset to the Milton community and upholds the rural lifestyle that was the vision for our city. The requested capacity of 250 will ensure the financial viability of this property without negatively affecting the community. This facility will not only yield significant tax dollars to the city, but will preserve the ability to maintain its appearance and use rather than forcing the owner to find other suitable economic use, which could be detrimental to our neighborhood. Thank you. And that's from Brent and Chrissy Reeves. And that is the end of comments in support.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of ZM-15-01?
We have one comment in opposition, and that is Mr. Theodore Cox.
I'm Theodore Cox, 13860 Bethany Oaks Point, Alpharetta, Milton, I guess. We have no objection to the pavilion, let me first say that. The horse has left the barn with respect to that. And as far as the community zoning meeting, I would just make one recommendation. It comes about two weeks before the meeting with business travel. It's very difficult to make those meetings. If there's any way you could give a little earlier notice, it'd be much appreciated. This is my eighth official zoning meeting involving Jeff Runner between Milton and Fulton County. In finance, when a client continuously violates an agreement, we use the term credit fatigue. That's what we have here, zoning variance fatigue. Clearly, this is Mr. Runner's strategy. Just keep filing variances, and the opposition will ultimately give up and stop caring. But, this is where our elected officials are supposed to act. Mr. Runner told the people of Bethany Oaks that 150 people was as many as he would request because he didn't want to impact the neighborhood. But, now, because of money and financial considerations, he says that he needs 200 or 250. Why does it matter if prospective clients want 200? Why is this the criteria? How about making someone keep his word? It doesn't matter that the fire department said 400 people are allowed. It isn't about grandma or cousins, which is some of the arguments he's made before about some overages. It's about doing the right thing and holding someone accountable for what he's, the prior promises were. The argument raised about the number of parking spots is somewhat irrelevant. Mr. Runner has openly written of his desire to use a bus and shuttle system to bring people to his horse show events. Thankfully, that was declined by Fulton County or ultimately withdrawn by Mr. Runner after it was rejected by the zoning board. Parking spots is not the issue. It's noise and cars and alcohol and traffic. Please reject any use of buses and shuttles and keep this facility to 150 people. I don't know if the city council realizes how loud 200 people are when they're about 2.5 square acres away from your home. Some of you live on five-acre lots or more. Imagine 200 people on the very outskirts of your property, and it isn't an infrequent event. It could be two times each weekend for the entire summer, perhaps 50 times per year. We have heard about some noise monitoring systems. I still don't understand what that is, and yet the city is about to apply the same noise ordinance, Mr. Runner, that also applies to Montana's bar. A bar on Highway 9 has the same noise standard as a party venue bordering a subdivision on AG1 land. Can this actually be the case? And also, just with respect to what you just heard, there seemed to be so much talk about noise and, and the hours of operation. That isn't one of the concerns that we're talking about with this particular facility. Let's talk a little about hours of operation and why more people matter. We know artificial noise must stop at 10:00, and events must end at 11:00. But, what time does the last alcohol-filled person leave? When does the caterer leave? When does the band leave? The staff leave? 1:00 a.m.? 2:00 a.m.? This has not been addressed by anyone. And it ties into what you've approved for the traffic flow. In all the maps that you see, you see this one acre of lot, but we're really talking about two distinct properties. You have a newly permitted path of traffic to enter one way and exit out to the south, several hundred yards directly behind my home, and exit out via the main barn near Yellow House Farm. This traffic will flow till 1:00 a.m., 2:00 a.m. There are absolutely no limitations on when any of this traffic can take place. Again, imagine if this were two and a half acres from your home. 100, 125 cars, trucks, doors, people's voices, 12, 1:00 a.m.? If some of Mr. Runner's neighbors are in favor of this facility, then they should not matter that the traffic flow exits the same way it enters. We would ask you to reconsider the traffic flow and restrict all cars, parking, trucks, and noise to the lot in question. Do not allow it to flow out the other way. As I've said to you in writing, you need to experience what we experience. You need to come to our home at 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock at night and listen to the bands, and listen to the noise, and listen to the voices, and watch the trucks and the cars and the traffic to truly appreciate what we're dealing with. Zoning laws are written for a reason, and variance are supposed to be approved for hardship and not, and especially if there's not a nuisance that are detrimentally impacting neighbors. This is no longer about preserve rural Milton, and I think we all know that, and I've expressed that to you in writing. Why preserve rural Milton was just, really, just a beautiful political argument. This is about one person profiting at the expense of others. Please reject the proposal for 150 people, reject the proposal 250 people. Want to say 150 plus or minus 5%? That's fine. But, 250 people is just taking advantage of the neighborhood. Thanks very much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
That's all.
So, you have a little bit of time left for rebuttal?
I just want to say, we haven't changed our plans ever from the get-go. We still are planning for events that will have between 150, 165 people in them. We're going to put a financial penalty in for anyone who wants to have more than that. We originally submitted, we were asking, you know, I don't even think we had a limit on it, and when they asked us what we thought, we, we asked for 250. So, we haven't changed that at all. There's a, we've been looking at this plan right from the get-go, so nothing's changed. Thank you.
The public hearing is now closed. Is there any council discussion?
So, Kathy, all right, I'm getting a little confused now because I was going to ask questions about, you know, earlier about, you know, complaints or, you know, issues with current operation of the facility, and apparently, there's no events that have taken place, yet I just heard a citizen say, you ought to come out and live in my house and listen to all the noise and the band and everything else. So, are we having events at this facility right now, or are we not?
Well, I'd like Mr. Runner to come up, but from memory, I believe that when we last approved it, he had two weddings that had been booked there, and he said that he was... was going to allow those weddings to take place because they'd already been booked. And is that correct, Mr. Runner?
No, they were prior.
They were prior, so...
So, there hasn't been anything?
We had, my daughter had a Christmas party there that ended at 8:00 one evening. We've got a couple of birthday parties for our grandkids, or one birthday party for our grandchild, and just a couple of private things, kind of like a family event there. But we have not had any booked any events yet, no.
It's not completely wrong.
If you wish to speak, you have to come up and speak in the microphone, and you have to speak only when a council member asks you a direct question. So, if anyone would like to ask Mr. Cox a question, then he's welcome to come up and speak.
Yes, please, Mr. Cox.
Yes, sir.
I'm getting...
He's using the date of when the zoning meeting occurred, but there were events that occurred prior. He was holding events prior to even asking for the special use facility. That's the point.
I'm just going to be real prescriptive. In the last 30 days, have there been any events?
No, sir.
In the last six months, have there been any events?
No.
Okay, so, this would have occurred more than six months ago.
Correct.
What you're talking about. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I've got a question to Kathy regarding the hours. You know, we heard what Mr. Cox had addressed as far as concerns. I think we were pretty discreet when we approved another one of these as far as what time people had to exit. If the music stops at 10:00, can you just kind of run through what the current requirements are or restrictions?
Yeah, let me ask Robin to do that. That was part of the last use permit.
Yeah, so, what was approved earlier or last year was regarding sound. It says, "Artificial sound emitting from the facility shall cease at 10:00 p.m. Artificial sound shall be allowed only on the west side of the property." So, those were the only conditions that you made at that time for this specific use. But also, the use permit has its own timing requirements, and that is, "Hours of operation shall be between 8:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. when adjacent to residential districts or AG1 district use for single-family dwellings," such as in this situation. So, technically, the hours of operations can go up to 11:00 p.m. because you did not give additional hours limitations other than for the artificial sound.
So, 11:00 p.m. At 11:00 p.m., is that when...
Everybody should be vacated.
The guests have to be gone?
Right.
Okay, so, it won't be going until 1:00 o'clock or midnight?
Right.
Any variance at all on the number, the days of operation in these hours?
Um...
And what was approved?
Let's see. The days... There were no days limitations.
Okay, so, it's 10:00 p.m. All artificial sound on any day for any event ceases 11:00 p.m. Basically, they've got to be off property.
Right.
It's got to be broke down. So, the caterers, everyone needs to be gone, leaving no later than 11:00 p.m.
I mean, I think the event could leave, and within reason. I mean, we're not going to be, you know, splitting hairs over 15 or 16.
The intent would be to have the party or the event to cease.
Right.
And guests gone by 11:00 o'clock and not dragging on until 1:00.
Correct.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Along that same line, I don't recall all of the hours that were specified here. Sunday is exceptional, is it not?
It's not in this. There were no conditions to limit Sundays at all. I think you're thinking of the Little River Farms.
Right.
You all were very, very specific about the days of the week and the weekends, so, which that was not specific in this case.
Talking about the Little River Farm, which we approved last fall. What was the allowable occupancy?
It was 250.
Yeah, so, following up on that, I remember a lot about this originally coming before us and some of the debate that we had related to, you know, should we allow it, should we not allow it? If we allow it, you know, what restrictions should we put on it? I mean, there's, it was a, I'd call it fun, but it really wasn't that fun. And I have a little bit of difficulty fixing something that I don't know is broken. Because here we are, we granted this a good 10, 12, shoot, it could have been...
January of 2014.
A year ago. We haven't had any events, and yet, we're looking at changing something. So, Kathy, I mean, from your point of view, why do we need to make changes? I mean, I get the structural thing. I understand the pavilion requirement. I think the pavilion is actually unique because it's going to be set on the other side of the house. It's going to have very little impact. All the things that you listed as reasons why it makes sense to allow that, I would agree with. But when it comes to the number of people in attendance, I would rather get some time under our belt, operating under the conditions that we originally granted, so that we can see if there are any difficulties, and we can see if there's any problems related to parking, we can see if there's any issues related to noise, all of those things, and sort of test the ground before we just start changing what we, what we spent a lot of time debating last time. So, that's the problem that I have. It's like we're negotiating with ourselves. We said, after a lot of discussion, let's set this for 150, 160, and now, nothing's really changed. We haven't even had any events, and here we are, we're back at the table saying, well, you know, that decision probably wasn't as good as another one we can make. So, I'm a little confused on that. I really don't think it makes sense at this point. I'm sure there was a question in there somewhere, so maybe I was just bending my thoughts on the matter.
Any additional questions of council?
I think we still, well, we still have the outstanding question on the food and the sprinkler system that Chris is working on.
Well, as regards to that, I'm not sure that's really relevant to this discussion.
Yeah, the only reason I think it came up was because that was a statement of hardship and then, but as far as the approval of the pavilion, no.
The sprinkler system's kind of a separate issue that it's up to the fire marshal's decision as an occupancy issue.
But I think that was why he expressed the need for the pavilion, is so that he would have a place undercover to serve the food that would be permanent.
Correct, correct.
And just, I think if we were to go forward with the pavilion, which it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of opposition, that wouldn't, just to be clear, that that wouldn't, if we approved that, that wouldn't say, okay, you don't have to do X sprinkler system. You know, that's still, that's still up in the, potentially up in the air.
I do have a question, staff. We haven't seen any pictures of what this pavilion might look like. Is it something that would have to go before the...
Design review board.
Design review board?
Yes, it certainly would, yes.
So, this would be merely approving the building of a structure of this size in that location?
Correct, correct. Modifying the site plan to show it on the plan, but the actual architectural review would have to go to the DRB.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with Councilperson Longoria's thoughts on this as far as the guest increase.
I will tell you, going through this process, though, it is, there is a, that 200 mark is really kind of a cutoff with the, looking for places to have events. And if you're looking at wedding sizes, you know, it's, I don't know that he needs 250, but it seems like 200 gives you, would open it for a lot more events, just an additional 50 people.
Do we have any other questions?
So, okay, well, that's a good point. So, Kathy, or Chris, or anybody, if Mr. Runner, let's say we didn't change the number of people that we allow for. Let's say we set it, it's at 150, 160, whatever it is, it's set there. And let's say something happens and Mr. Runner takes on an event that he knows is going to be above that number. Let's say he knows, in this one particular case, there's going to be 220 people there. We're not worried about parking. We're not worried about those things because we know we have the capacity to do that. Is there an option for him to come to the city and say, hey, in this particular case, I'm going to have 220 people? Or does he just operate under the cover of his existing permit and hope nobody catches him?
I think it's the latter and not the former.
I was hoping that wasn't going to be the answer.
And unfortunately, you don't ever know how many will show up.
Yeah.
When you invite them. So, I mean, it's, that's part of the challenge.
Well, caterers figured out a way. They always, you know...
Yeah, but the problem is you don't know that until two weeks, a week to two, 10 days before the wedding. And that's when you have to give the caterer the final number. That's not when you can book a location.
Right. To that same point, I guess, looking at the probability of having attendance over 160 up to 200, since he's already approved to 150, 160 level, could an increase of over and above that threshold be allowed by an administrative variance on a case by case?
We don't believe so.
Answered that?
Did you get us any information on...
I'm working on it. I found a fire marshal in West Virginia who doesn't have phone service but has a phone on Wi-Fi. And I found our assistant fire marshal who hasn't had power since Monday in a house that's 41 degrees. So, they were both excited to hear from me tonight. And I posed the question, and preliminarily, I've gotten back an answer, and I'm still waiting for one as I'm sitting here, but I feel it's better to be in the room than not in the room, is that they believe that there is a nuance between the actual, either serving it or preparing it versus the consuming of it, protecting about food and drink. And I need to get that confirmed before I say that is the fire marshal's position. But the belief at this point is that that was the whole purpose of this pavilion, was so that it could be served in a place that met a code, and then the consuming of it can kind of happen wherever. But I need to confirm that, that that's in fact his position.
And that would be more of a, I guess, with community development and the fire marshal working with him, Mr. Runner, on what he actually has to have and where he can, what type of event, where his events can be held.
Oh, yeah. I went back, I forgot to what extent that we had been back and forth in communication of this topic until I went and tried to find the email, put my hands on it, answered the question. There was emails about an A3 space and an A2 space in the 2012 International Building Code. And, you know, so I found a bunch of stuff that I just, you know, I don't want to come out and preach to the council that it is in fact what it is, because I really need to hear from the fire marshal what his position is. But we're working on getting an answer on that, on that topic.
While you were out, we talked about that issue, and really doesn't have any relevancy to the application here right now that really applies to his original permit, use permit.
I was running the discussion while I was out, so I saw that. And, yeah, I guess that could be one of the things that the councilor says, that all that's in front of us tonight is the request to add a pavilion to the site and to increase the occupancy. And what he does beyond that, and how the use of it occurs, it is going to occur in accordance with the code. It is going to occur within the International Building Code and our local ordinances, and the fire marshal's there for the purpose of helping allow that to take place. But to the extent that council uses the answers to those questions in its decision-making process, I think they're fair questions as you debate. So, we might get you a good answer.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Mr. Runner a couple of questions.
Yes.
Is this a, have you not started having events at the facility because you just not, aren't really prepared to have those events? Or has it been, because, I mean, it seemed like a year ago when we were talking to you, you knew it was going to take a little bit of time. I didn't get the impression that was going to be a year from then.
I didn't either.
And, yeah. So, what are your challenges right now?
The challenges is, are taking an old house and trying to comply it to get it in compliance with today's commercial codes. And we've had, you know, as the city manager said, we've had numerous meetings on this, not, you know, hundreds if not thousands of discussions on, and the sprinklers is the big thing. The handicapped accessibility, the bathrooms, that's, there's no problem there at all. The challenge is the sprinklers. And to do what the new commercial code that the city, that the city has adopted for sprinklers, we have to sprinkle every closet, the attic, every porch, every entertainment center, anything that's closed and built in has to have a sprinkler in it. And it would require a six-inch water line, or water meter coming from the main, coming through. We have to have fire department access or hookup to it. We're talking, you know, 100,000 if not 200. I mean, the water meter alone is $57,000 for a six-inch water meter. And that's what it was six months ago. It could be 80,000 today. You know, they're changing. But the biggest hurdle we're coming over is just not a clear understanding by anyone of what the actual code is requiring. And the fire marshal, and he's got his book, and he says, this is what it says. But then, when you talk to the people who wrote the book, they're saying, no, I don't think that's really what it means. And so, it's kind of an ongoing battle. So, we thought, well, rather than fight the battle that way, let's kind of do an in-run and do it this other way.
Okay, so, let's pretend a miracle happens and you have, we have perfect clarity tomorrow on what exactly is needed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Regardless of what is needed, how much time do you think is going to, is it going to take before you're actually having functions at the facility?
We could be ready construction-wise within two months. The, I hesitate to...
So, you got a two-month runway once we figure out what it really means and what you need to do?
Once we get the building permit.
Okay.
To do. And we've got, everything else is resolved. And so, we thought, well, let's go ahead and do an in-run. Let's do, the pavilion was on the site plan. We got the variances, or we thought the pavilion was on the site plan. We got the variances to build the pavilion. Let's just go ahead and build the pavilion. While we sort out all this other stuff, I can put a residential sprinkler system in the house pretty quickly. We can get that up and rolling. And then, if it comes back, that we need to do more because we can come back and do that and address it at that time. And if I may, while I've got the mic, the increase in the people, there's two reasons. One was...
Well, hold on to that thought because I'm going to ask you questions about that as well.
Okay.
Okay, so, a year ago, when we were up here debating the, you know, virtues of supporting you in this decision or not, we talked a lot about the number of people that you thought were going to be required in order to make things viable from a business point of view. I remember a lot of questions that we had that were very specific because it didn't do us any good. In fact, I think we used this argument, it doesn't do us any good to permit you for a number that's going to allow you to go out of business in six months.
Right.
Okay? And we got some assurances from you that 150 to 160 was a good number and would allow you to operate and conduct your business the way you thought it needed to be.
Right.
Now, I know we haven't had any events there yet, okay? Do you think it's a reasonable idea for us to not change the number of attendees that are allowed until we get some...
Absolutely not.
Yeah, I need to say that, but...
No, nothing has changed since we talked before, except as, you know, Mayor Thurmond has said, there's, 200 is kind of the magic number with brides. Everyone thinks they're going to have 200 people at their wedding. And so, when you start talking to, you know, future brides or, you know, future people who are going to have their weddings there, they're all, oh, we can't have 200. No, we don't want, we don't want to talk to you. So, we don't, we still contend that our facility is perfect for 150 to 160 and below. We don't want to have 200, but we don't want to preclude ourselves from being considered for a bride who thinks she's going to have 200 people there. And that's why when we originally came in, we were asking for 250. We're, you know, we're still back at that number. And then, the other part is, is we've got the one over off of Batesville Road, they were approved for 250. So, now, it's kind of put us at, you know, at odds with our competition, if you will, although we don't know... although we don't know that. You know, I think we're, we kind of got different clientele. But it's really hard to get anyone to come and look when you say, hey, we're limited to 200 or to 150. So, what we thought, because we really don't want to have more than 150 and 160, and I'm dead serious about that. We'll get them in and we'll say, okay, your, our group plans start talking about 125 to 150, you get this, this price. But we'll upcharge so much for over 150 that it will discourage them. They come in, they look, oh, yeah, I absolutely gotta have my wedding there. It'll discourage them from going to the 200 or 250 mark. It'll cost them so much more per person for everyone over 150, there'll be a financial penalty to them for doing it, and they probably, they're, it's probably, it's gonna be enough that they're probably gonna say, well, let's, let's try to scale this back a little bit. But if you get them in the door and they see the place and they go, yeah, you know what, I can, I can really have Aunt Josie not come. It'll be okay. I can cut her off the list.
Well, I can tell you how the timeline works. The bride wants to find the location first.
Yep.
And then she gets, starts working on her wedding list, and then she meets with the caterer and finds out how much it costs per person, and that wedding list drops off 20%.
Right, right. I agree with all those things.
And then you get down to a reasonable number.
I agree with all those things. The problem is, I can't believe that these are new things. We knew these things a year ago. You knew these things a year ago.
That's why we were asking for 250 a year ago.
Okay. But when we were specific and said, are we cutting off your needs by granting you 150 to 160, you told us no.
Well, I, I don't think we knew then what we know now as far as talking, because we hadn't really talked to any brides. We really didn't know. We just knew from our experience, 150 to 165 was, was a max number for us. We didn't realize to the extent that brides will say, oh, well, if I can't do 200, I don't even need to come look at your place.
Well, I'm all for you succeeding in the business. I think that, you know, you got a beautiful place there. I just don't think that it's necessarily fair for us to negotiate with ourselves on this particular topic, but I understand what you're telling me.
I guess the question then becomes, why 150 for us but 250 for the other?
Well, the two, if the two pieces of property were the same, I, you'd have a perfect argument. But since they're two different places, located in two different places within Milton, with different neighborhoods surrounding them, different road systems, different, everything is different about the two places, so, so it's hard to compare the permitting. So, let me tell you, they got it much worse when it came to the times of operation and stuff like that.
Yeah, I understand. We understand. We just felt, like, we left after the last one, we felt like it was just somebody just kind of arbitrarily picked 150, because from what we saw from sitting out here, that, you know, we didn't see the behind-the-scenes discussions and all, but it just seemed like 150 was just an arbitrary number. We'd asked for 250, staff wanted 100, so we just kind of met in the middle, so...
I think, if I remember right, our biggest set of concerns had to do with the parking and the traffic. And, and it's, it hasn't gotten any better.
No.
You know, so, so, okay. All right. Thank you.
I've got a question for Mr. Runner. I, I know you've requested 250. Staff has recommended 200. It feels like that's the proper number as far as parking. What are your thoughts on that?
On 200?
Right.
We could live with that.
I had a question for Catherine. Can you kind, kind of refresh us on why we have a different ingress and egress on that property, going back to Mr. Cox's concern about the traffic traveling south and exiting a different place?
Yeah, I think it was a constraint. Robin, that was, again, part of the...
It's part of the transportation requirements, but from what I remember, it has to do with sight distance on Hopewell, as well as just the general pattern of leaving, but I think a major part was sight distance.
Right.
So, it's a, it's at a bad position if you were trying to take a left or a right as you come in and his gated entrance versus if you go further south where the farm entrance is, it's a better sight distance to be able to go left or right to leave.
To leave, but going, going in, the ingress was not gonna be an issue.
Right, correct. Yeah.
At the other location.
Yes. So, that was a requirement of the, of Public Works to do that.
Carter's, if you need more information on that, Carter is in the building.
Yes, he's hiding right around the corner over there.
Yeah. He was just walking. He was meeting GDOT folks down the hall, so, there you go. We've got the veteran expert here if you need more transportation stuff.
You want a site plan?
What was the question again?
Yeah, that had to do with the restriction on the driveway width coming in and out. And so, some of the existing walls and maybe some of the landscaping and trees in there prevented what we would consider to be a two-way entrance at that location. So, the, the discussion on that was, we'll bring them in one way and bring them out the other way to prevent any conflicts at the entrance at Well Road.
So, so the issue wasn't the line of sight, because that's where I was struggling, is why would it be different going in and different coming out? The issue was the width of the driveway. You could, it basically became a one-way in and a one-way out for the...
There could be some sight distance issues. I don't remember off the top of my head right there. I know we met out in the field to kind of review that, but I'm sorry, I just stopped off the top of my head. I don't know if that was a significant concern as, as much as just having enough width to accommodate two-way traffic up that entrance road.
Well, you typically wouldn't have sight distance issues entering the property, would you?
Not in that condition. If you're making, anytime you're making a left across traffic, you want to make sure you have sight distance to that in one particular direction. But I think the issue, if there was any sight distance, would be back to the north at that location.
To the, to the north would be where the entrance is going in.
Right. So, when you look out to the north, I think if there was gonna be any sight distance consideration, it would be if that was an exit looking back up to the north on Hopewell. I just don't recall what that particular distance is.
I remember that discussed.
If I could, counsel, as well, I just want to, it was good, good questions. And if you're using the answers to those questions in your formulation of a decision as to whether or not a pavilion's appropriate or the capacity should increase, then just remember that's what we're focused on tonight. The rest of those have, those have already been granted in the initial...
Right, right.
We have any additional questions?
Not a question, just to comment on this. Obviously, the pavilion, I think, is a great idea from looking at it, and, you know, I saw that and thought that made a lot of sense. On the number of people, I tend to think a little bit more on Karen's points. I look back at my own wedding or weddings I've been to and what it was, and the number in and of itself is just a marketing idea in my mind. I think that, you know, as it is, I think, I think Mr. Runner's point is, is really dead on that, you know, if you want to compete from that perspective, a bride's gonna want to go someplace where she makes, is thinking of all these people that she wants, because it's always overblown initially as far as who they're gonna have, things like that, not necessarily that they're bad people, but it's just, they think, oh, we want to have this great big thing. Because that's, you know, how it was with mine when I looked at it. And so, I was the one that was mailing out all the cards, and it wasn't nearly 200, but we thought initially there would be 200 people. We would talk to it, and it wound up being closer to the 150 level. So, I, I can understand that. I know that, from a marketing perspective, we like to say that we can efficiently calculate exactly how many people we want. Unfortunately, because markets are inefficient, it's very hard to do that. I think we need to be able to, to recognize that if we know what that number is, you know, and anything underneath that is acceptable, I'm okay with that. And 200 didn't seem like a big problem to me when I saw that in the staff recommendations. So, I, I've been quiet here most of the time tonight because it made sense to me, and that's just where I'm coming from.
Do we have any additional questions of the applicant, opposition, or staff?
Counsel, if you, if you'd allow me to, I have received an email from the fire marshal that I would like to just, to share, just so that it is part of the record tonight. And Matt tells us that, he starts by saying, the way the code reads, and mind you, this is from the top of my head in a hotel room in West Virginia, so... "The trigger that would require the full commercial sprinkler system in the, in the occupancy is the combination of the occupancy load and the fact that food and alcohol or drinks are served on premises. In order to allow the lesser sprinkler system, the occupancy load inside the structure would either have to drop below 100, or the food and drinks will not be served on that premises, in this case specifically the building, not the pavilion." So, the code answer based upon my research is to say that the food portion of the event is served in the pavilion, not the house. By the code, the two venues would have to be kept separate. He does indicate that unless he's invited, he doesn't plan on being at each individual event and policing the plate of food that might make it into the house. But he does, on the record, want this to be a distinction, that, he says, I don't want this to be a distinction without a difference, though. It needs to be clear that the pavilion is, is the intended location for the food and drink service and consumption.
So, it sounds like the threshold is 100 occupants, though. So, he could serve food in the house if the occupancy load was 100 or less.
That's what, I, that wasn't a particular question that I asked him, but I can tell you in his response that in order, in order to allow, and I'm quoting now, "In order to allow the lesser sprinkler system, the occupancy load inside the structure would either have to drop below 100, or the food and drinks would not be served on the premises." So, I guess, for the event, that would be...
The key there is occupancy load.
Key, there would be the 100 folks, so...
So, the food would have to be served outside if there's more than 100 folks.
And consumed, and consumed.
And consumed, yeah.
Can I clarify that? That's occupancy load.
Right.
Okay. Occupancy load is the number of square feet, feet divided by what you intend to use that area for. So, if it's an area where you're sitting down, it's seven square feet per person. Or, I'm sorry, if it's an area where you're standing, it's four square feet per person. If it's an area where you're sitting down with tables, it's seven square feet per person. If it's an area set up as an office, it's 50 square feet per person. That's how they calculate the occupancy load. The occupancy load of our house, it doesn't change depending on, you know, how many people you have there, based strictly on what the square feet of the structure is.
Counsel, I'd just like to clarify that Mr. Runner's comments don't necessarily change the fire marshal's comments that I just read into the...
Do we have any other questions? Would someone like to make a motion?
Close the hearing first.
Matt's got his paper.
Well, no one else does. All right. I would like to make a motion that we approve ZM 15-01 for 13895 Hopewell Road by Jeff Runner to modify Condition 2A to include a 40-by-60 pavilion on the site, and to modify Condition 1C to increase the number of guests from 150 to 200, Agenda Item Number 15-041.
First staff's recommended conditions.
First staff's recommended conditions for 200 occupants.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I am in full support of the structure. I am not, at this point in time, in support of increasing the number.
Okay. Any further discussion? There is a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion failed. We have a sec, another motion.
I'd make a motion to do what I suggested, which was approve the structure but not approve the increase in numbers, and I don't know how necessarily to word that, so if I need to...
It sounds as though your, your motion would be to approve ZM 15-01 at 13895 Hopewell Road by Jeff Runner approving Condition 2A to include a 40-by-60 pavilion on the site and denying Condition 1C, which would increase the number of guests from 150 to 250.
Correct.
No, I'll second that.
A motion was made by Councilmember Legoria and seconded by Councilmember Hewitt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
Councilmember, did that carry five to one? Did you vote in favor of that motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. There are no items under unfinished business or new business, so let's move on to mayor and council reports. Are there any council reports?
Last week, our new Fulton County Commissioner, Bob Ellis, appeared and unfortunately, he didn't have time to comment on the progress down at Fulton County. And it appears that we have a balanced budget in Fulton County, and first time in several years, and that's, I think, commendation to not only Bob Ellis for being a leader down there, but the ability, hopefully, for the rest of the Fulton County Commissioners to work together and hopefully get something done here this year and the next four years.
I think we're definitely seeing some positive things down there.
I just want to say, great job on the staff for all the weather conditions that came up and, you know, with the branches that came down and the ice on the trees and, and as crazy as it was, beautiful, but we haven't had a whole lot of problems up here in Milton on the roadway as far as I can see, and just want to commend you guys and our staff and everybody on the roadways for doing a good job the last couple of days.
And I'd second that. Driving all around the city, roads were cleared. You could see that limbs had been cut and pushed off to the side. There were a lot of trees and branches down, but all the roads were passable this morning.
Yeah, they did a great job. Any other council reports? Staff reports?
Yes, ma'am. Before I get into this staff report, Councilmember Lewis, would you want to give a quick update on our visit with the Department of Transportation? Or do you want to hold off on that to a later date?
No, we can do it now. It's kind of an ongoing saga. We actually had two meetings last Thursday, it was, down at GDOT. The first meeting involved members from City of Alpharetta and the city engineer, Chris Owens, councilman, director of Public Works, and with Chris, Carter, myself from Milton, and we met with two individuals, well, actually, Russell McMurray, chairman of GDOT, and Joe, was it Wilson? Chief project manager. But we, we talked about, in, in that meeting specifically, about the interchange that's proposed here at McGinnis Ferry and 400, and the impact that it would have on, on not only Alpharetta, but probably more so, a negative impact it would have on the city of Milton, at least the way it is designed at this time. So, McMurray understood what we were talking about and encouraged us to remain engaged with them, letting them know what our position is down there. That, that particular project, at least, correct me if I misstate it, was part of the, the bond referendum passed by Forsyth County last, last fall. Ken can correct me on that, too. And the new CID was formed in South Forsyth County last year, and they are a participant in this, this project, too. They have no other funding from Alpharetta or, or Milton, contiguous jurisdictions that. So, they're kind of going it on their own from that respect, without getting into any of the politics or, and that particular issue. It is, it is ongoing. They have awarded a contract to Morlan Altobelli to begin design of that interchange. I guess they're going about it without any federal funding. So, it's, it's a challenge from that respect. They heard us loud and clear down there as to how it's going to impact us, and hopefully we'll be able to stay engaged with them to come up with solutions that are agreeable to both us and Alpharetta, too. The second meeting, the next hour... to both us and, and Alpharetta, too. The second meeting, the next hour, we met with, was Forsyth County officials, Morland-Altebelle, Tom Morland was there, Johns Creek officials, and of course, Alpharetta and Milton. And the, the main topic at that time was the proposed widening of McGinnis Ferry, essentially from 400 over to Sergeant Road and Johns Creek. And Forsyth County has taken the initiative to, as part of their, their bond referendum also, I believe, to fund at least their part of it, which is half of it, 50% of the widening, since the center line of McGinnis Ferry represents the southern boundary of Forsyth County and northern boundary of Alpharetta and Johns Creek. After all of the pleasantries were, were given there in the first several minutes, and Forsyth County and Morland-Altebelle made their presentations on what they proposed to do and, and how they're going to fund it. The obvious discussion turned to, well, Alpharetta, you need to pony up 25%, and Johns Creek need to pony up 25% also, which amounts to approximately $11 million from each of those two jurisdictions. And the thoughts or the comments that came from Johns Creek and Alpharetta was, we haven't been brought into this discussion and we don't have $11 million and we're really not interested. So is that fairly accurate?
I think you said it very nicely.
Without getting into any other...
I think that's, yep, I think you did a great job.
Can I ask a question? So along the same lines, as it impacts Milton feeding to that, to that intersection, there's no funds dedicated by either GDOT or Forsyth County in actually improving the roads, which are going to become a, a cut through to actually get to that thing, which is the concern that I've raised. With Bethany Bend and Morris Road, that whole, and that section of McGinnis Ferry, that is going, it's already a traffic problem today. We're adding more housing on the Forsyth side. Question is, what are we going to do if that, if that exchange, people are going to be heading that way instead of going down a one-way parkway, which is a four-lane road?
And that was the position that we brought to the, that was the position and I guess the data that we brought to that meeting was to, was to put that on the table and to say, you know, hear us loud and clear that if they get off and turn left, we're going to deal, we're going to deal with it. You know, we heard Commissioner McMurray say that, you know, the state's funds are distributed to local jurisdictions in the form of ALM, which we know, and that there's not, but, you know, a few scraps left at the end to potentially, you know, more projects, small projects here, there, and everywhere across the state, which makes total sense that there's not, that's, people often mistake that the state just has this checkbook that they're willing to write checks out of, but it, it doesn't exist. You know, that and in, in the light of watching this House Bill 170 work through the legislature and what we end up with on the back end of that and what that means to us in 2022. There's a lot of moving parts here. And yes, we wanted to make sure that we put on the table that the widening of McGinnis Ferry, or the interchange plus the widening of McGinnis Ferry Road, even though not contiguous to Milton, affected them. And it affects us there across that whole, whole Bethany, all the way to Highway 9, again, people to Highway 9. You know, it's, you could look at the map and there's some logical points of where these projects terminate, and you can see why they terminate to some degree in places that they do. And, you know, they often terminate short of a creek, and I can't imagine that that's not by design. So, you know, it, it's just something that is good now that we're having the discussions. It's good now because these projects are fairly, you know, they're ways off. But there's multiple, there's multiple people with, with projects that cost a lot of money. And when you put those two in the mix, you know, you always start out with the struggle before you figure out the solution.
Right. What, did they give you a target when they wanted to have that exchange built?
You know, I, I don't want to speak on behalf of Forsyth County, but I'll just, I'll, I'll say what they said and what I heard in the meeting. And that was that these projects, even as they get into design at this point, there's a widening project of 400 that's to occur long before these projects, McGinnis Ferry ever occur. So we'll see an impact to, to better traffic, believe it or not, in North Fulton long before these come to fruition. So, you know, we'll keep you updated. We're, we're years off. So it's not like this is a next week, a next week let. There's still, there's still a design and there's still about $22 million short. So...
Yeah, I can offer, just in the capacity of the information I have, because it's on Tuesday's work session agenda in Forsyth County, the memorandum of understanding with GDOT for the widening of 400 from McGinnis Ferry all the way up to what may be State Route 369 is, that money will actually be headed down to GDOT by late May. And we're talking about a $53 million contribution by the county to fund a, a single lane widening, both northbound and southbound.
I think the discussion surrounding that widening was that hopefully bids will come in under their budget. So they're going to carry that widening as far as that $53 million is going to...
That was the first time I've heard it ever get as far north as 369.
Yeah.
I, I did hear at the meeting that they were impressed by how far they believed the funding would get them, because I had always heard Pilgrim Mill or, or, or Baldridge Marina. So if they're now talking 369, that may in fact be where they're trying to get to.
Well, and then let me, let me, let me bootstrap off Councilmember Lusk's. Again, it's a matter really of what the bid showed, how far. I think aspirationally, that'd be the, that'd be the home run goal.
Thank you, Councilmember, for, for that update. We've got, I just want to give two real quick staff reports, then we've got two public staff reports. In a follow-up to the work session agenda that we had a week ago, I heard loud and clear that the council's desire to move forward with securing some type of plan on our conservation initiative, conservation projects. To this point, last week, I had a great two and a half hour meeting with the Milton Grove Green Group over lunch. I believe we made some substantial progress. In their minutes, they accurately captured the discussion we had, so they were very valuable in what roles they, as a committee, believe that they should play in that initiative. I've subsequently met with our, many of our city staff members in working out a plan, and I meet with our conservation consultant tomorrow morning as kind of the, the three parts of that triangle to put together some, a recommendation to the council. And I'll bring back something to you probably around mid-year as to what we want to do from a staffing perspective on conservation initiative slash sustainability initiative of Milton. So I just didn't want you to think that that had not been heard last week and in fact is moving forward. Potentially good news, and I don't want to get too far out there, but good news with respect to the city's first TDR transaction. I saw that earlier today, so stay tuned. It's better news than I've seen yet. It's still by far a done deal, but it's much better news than I have seen to this point. And I also want to let you know that with our, with respect to the response to weather, we have just as likely a second response to weather later this week. We're starting to make plans for what arrives in this area Friday night into Saturday morning. So we're going to be exceptionally cold tonight and tomorrow night, and then we're looking towards another winter weather event, and we don't know what that looks like. The, the state is still reporting in their, in their outputs to us that the probability and reliability of their information is low. And so when you have probability and reliability of low, I don't want to share what it is because it has just as much chance that it'll change between now and Friday. But just know that's on our, that's on our to-do list this week. We've published two staff reports tonight. The first is with Courtney Spriggs, our public outreach coordinator. She wants to share with you the 2015 event schedule that's, that's starting to form up that kicks off this weekend with the new Broadwell Pavilion kickoff, and I won't steal her thunder, but we'd like to give you an update on that. And then Stacy's going to pick up where we left off at the work session last week, and we're going to try to get through this alcohol beverage ordinance revision so that we can bring forward something to the council to amend that code before spring. Courtney, take it away. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Courtney Spriggs. I've talked with most of you, but I haven't been officially introduced. I'm your public outreach coordinator. I've worked here for a little while. I came from the police department, and that is actually what my background is in, is law enforcement. I worked in Lumpkin County as both, I'm sorry, as a patrol officer, a sergeant, and a special persons, special victims investigator, and then in Forsyth County as their community outreach specialist for the, bless you, for the sheriff's office. So that is my background. And so this position offered me an opportunity to sort of widen that. So I'm not just talking about law enforcement or working with crime victims or answering to those questions, but with the city as a whole. So on that account, we have given y'all an updated list of our special events. The first, of course, our kickoff of the new Broadwell Pavilion, a beautiful, beautiful facility. I'm sure y'all have seen it completed. Hopefully, we won't all freeze to death out there, but apparently it's going to be very cold. We have heaters, we have the fireplace. Hopefully, that will alleviate some of that cold. But we've got the plaque that'll be put up. We've got food trucks, a band, the Chuck Nation Band out of Murrayville, is a string band. They will be performing. We'll do the ribbon cutting, so I hope you all can make that. Also...
(laughter)
Also, in February, our Milton Mayor's Run and Jog for a Cause. We've partnered with North Point Pediatrics to hold that 5K, a Peachtree qualifier. It benefits our parks and then three different pediatric cancer foundations. So to help those families with the cost, their children who are suffering. Earth Day, I've met with Milton Grove Green to start planning Earth Day, April 18th, at Friendship Park. A new event in May in partnership with Crab Apple Community Association is Milton Hometown Jubilee, featuring local beer and wine, local foods, local restaurants, local vendors, things specific to Milton. And that's going to be in Crab Apple, of course, at the pavilion. Our Fulton Golden Games, that's in partnership with all of North Fulton, Roswell, Johns Creek, Sandy Springs, Alpharetta. We partner with them, and that whole month is senior citizens have different games they can participate in. Of course, Memorial Day, I'm going to get with Councilmember Lusk, and we're going to plan that and make that exciting. Also new are Milton Farmer's Market and Food Trucks at the pavilion. You can see we're going to put that to use. Farmer's Market will be, and Food Trucks will be every Saturday, starting May 23rd, all the way through the summer, from 4:00 to 8:00. And people, we, we put that out on Facebook and sort of got a, a feel for what the people wanted, when they, when they would like to see that in their community, and that was the response, was, was definitely Saturday and afternoon, because in the morning, they're going to Alpharetta's Farmer's Market. So hopefully in the afternoon, they'll come to ours. On three of those Saturdays, we'll have movies on Broadwell, where we formerly had them in Friendship Park. Now we'll have them, we're going to shut down Broadwell Road and have the movies right after Farmer's Market and Food Trucks on those, those Saturdays. And the movies we're leaning toward are sort of musical and family-friendly, you know, that everybody can enjoy outside on a summer night after they've enjoyed the Food Trucks and Farmer's Market. Our K-Nets Support Tournament, as always, in September. We'll help out PD with that. Crab Apple Fest, again, in conjunction with Crab Apple Community Association, will be October 4th. Veterans Day in November, and our Christmas events, Christmas in Crab Apple, again, with Crab Apple Community Association. And my favorite, the new one, the Breakfast with Santa, the fire department, that was a huge, huge success last year, our first time, the first time we did it. Hopefully, we can get more people involved in that and make that even, even bigger and better this year. It was a unique-to-Milton event, and I think a lot of people enjoyed it a lot. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final staff report tonight is a pickup of the discussion that we started a week ago Monday at the work session. I've heard from a couple of council members, so I want to lead off this staff, or staff report and presentation by saying that the couple I've heard from that have inquired as to what ordinance changes we need to make to allow for there to be more mobility of people potentially leaving restaurants and frequenting other restaurants, et cetera, and having more mobility around the community as opposed to the strict adherence to the boundaries of a restaurant or the boundaries of a patio. This is the, these are the revisions that will allow that to happen. So if we work through this and we get to some level of comfort that we've captured correctly, the council's desire and vision, we will expedite bringing these forward at the next two meetings in March for a first presentation and a second read, so that by the time we get to, hopefully the weather's starting to turn warm and spring being here, that if your desire is to give this flexibility to Milton's restaurants, this ordinance will allow you to, to do that.
So you're saying this will be on the work session in March?
We had it on the work session last week, and because we ran out of time, we were running late, we moved it as a published staff report tonight. So my goal is, it's about a 20-minute presentation. My goal is to go ahead and get that accomplished tonight so that then the next time you'll see it brought forward is in the form of first presentation on March the 2nd.
Oh, so you're saying you want to go over this right now?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Unless you direct me otherwise.
No, I think we get in a rhythm, and by the time we get to staff reports, we're usually thinking, we're done. And so I'm just warming up to the idea. Keep going. It's all right.
So I think the discussion will be about 20 minutes, but we'll have a quick executive session. We'll still have you home before 9:00.
We hope. Okay.
With a lead-in like that, Stacy, this could be great.
So there are a few things that I need some guidance on, as I talked about on the work session last week. One of the things we started to get into was special events facilities. I talked with Roswell and tried to get out of them what, what they do with their special events facilities. And they said that their language, which we copied, is pretty vague and didn't, didn't allow for, I guess, some clarity that they needed to answer some of the questions that they faced. So in thinking about that, since that discussion I had last week, I have a proposal on this. So the way the ordinance reads, it looks like any special event facility, regardless of whether or not they, the owners of them... I'm going to get sick over here.
(laughter)
Regardless of whether or not the owners of the facility will be serving the alcohol or if they allow caterers to come in and serve the alcohol, it looks like they have to get an alcohol license. What I, what I proposed, after talking with Roswell, is that if they serve the alcohol themselves, then they should get an alcohol license. But if they, and, and it's basically, you know, they prepare the food, they serve the alcohol, then they should get an alcohol license.
Page 33.
I'm, I'm looking on 33, which is...
Page 33.
Page 33, section 4-337. But if they allow caterers to come in and serve the alcohol, which I believe is what Yellow River, no, not Little River Farm is doing, then the alcohol caterers will have to have the alcohol license and the facility itself will not have to. That's what I propose. If y'all think there needs to be something different, then, you know, let me know and we'll write it in there. But I think we need to clarify the languages in there right now. We work with Elizabeth on that to get that done at Kendra Ratt's office.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I just think that it would be redundant to require two licenses.
Right.
And I think that's what we're trying to avoid. So if we can avoid that, that'd be great.
Okay.
And I think Mr., in talking to Mr. Runner, I think that's what he had said his intent was with his facilities, to have the caterer actually have the license, not the facility have the license themselves.
So I guess we're writing this for the future? Yes. Okay, that's fine. All right, I'm clear on that. So the next one is the publicly, publicly owned facilities, which is the next section down. I will say that the Parks and Rec Board is going to be meeting on this tomorrow to discuss what their opinions are on, on whether or not allowing alcohol, I mean, what they felt about allowing alcohol within the parks, what their opinion is, because I believe that was something that was brought up at the last work session that we had back in December. I wanted to make sure that we were clear on, on where you wanted to allow the alcohol. Was it, because I specifically put here the historic structure owned by the city and operated. We can specify that that is the Birdhouse, if we want to.
It's already started.
No.
Started.
It's so hard for me to say Birdhouse, too, because we've called it Hopewell House for so long.
The Thomas Birdhouse?
The Thomas Birdhouse.
Senior.
Senior.
I can label that specifically, or we can say any facility that is operated as, by the Parks and Rec Department.
What do other jurisdictions around here do?
Alpharetta allowed it in the Chamber and Will's Park. Alpharetta allowed it in the Chamber and Will's Park. And that's it. They specified the two locations. I have not found other ordinances that, that specified or talked about publicly-owned facilities to this, in this depth, when I did my research.
And once again, if it's being served in those facilities, it would be the caterer that would have to provide the alcohol beverage permit. And I think we have, if we're going to run out the, the Thomas Bird House, we're going to have to allow alcohol. So, I mean, at the very least, I think it needs to be allowed there with that same stipulation as far as the permit.
How about the Bethwell House?
They could serve wild turkey.
I mean, I don't, I don't see that that's a problem.
Or the Pavilion?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
So you're getting to the point where you, whether you name them, call them out by name, or just say all facilities?
All facilities.
Maybe easier to exclude things if there's, versus include them.
I concur with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, at this point, I guess we would exclude fire stations, publicly-owned facilities, and City Hall, once that comes online, in a public safety facility, then that comes online. So I'll work with, I'll work with Ken's office on that and language as well.
It's interesting to hear you all debate this, because I have seen this debated. You know, a lot of jurisdictions are like a zero, a zero tolerance policy for all city or county facilities. And so I've seen some that, that simply don't identify them, but allow it on the park and recreation facilities, and some that call it out, like what Stacy was mentioning. And the one I'm most familiar with is where we specifically called out certain facilities to allow alcohol on those facilities, catered in, brought in with a cater. And of course, we would require a special event. We actually got to the point where we would require, obviously, a release for the vendor to use that, and then even a specialized tenant insurance policy to cover. Unfortunately, you know, you can set the bar so high, though, with requiring all of that documentation, that folks never use it. It's just too difficult to use. So that's, that's the trick. And so I'll have to work with Stacy on that.
But it's good job security for attorneys.
Agreed. But, but again, you know, the ultimate objective is the government. It's right, we want to, we want to make sure whatever your policy objective is satisfied and not make it such that we, we've done a good job of papering the file, but no one ever, ever feels like they can use it because we make the documentation so high. Nonetheless, I've, I've heard this debate before.
Good. I think I have some direction on where to go with that. The last thing I wanted to get some guidance on was the open container area. The Crab Apple Form Base Code is the area that we are looking at. And I do have a map for you guys to look at, so pass this up here. I just wanted to make sure that you were okay with what we have defined in the ordinance as where open container is allowed. So where we said that open container is allowed is in, am I reading that correctly? T, yes, 4, 4-533. On that map, T4, T4 open and T5 transect zones. And then also it excludes the parcels fronting Green Road and Arnold Mill Road. It's a pretty wide area, and I wanted to make sure that you were aware how wide that area is and if you were okay with it. When I talked with Alpharetta and asked them how they depict the boundaries of their downtown district, they said they don't. They said they felt that it was a clear enough distinction between what is commercial and what is residential. And they, they don't have, there's no map, there's no sign.
So somebody could accidentally break the law and there's no definitive document to say i- if it's been broken or not? It's up to the discretion of enforcement person?
That's what it sounds like.
Wow.
And I also mentioned where we were considering allowing open container, and he brought up the question of the hole in the middle of Crab Apple, which is Alpharetta, and would it be allowed across their parking lot in the court facility over there? So, you know...
That's for them to police.
We obviously can't allow that, but yes, for them to police, isn't it?
State. Are you through with this?
I am.
Section here? I've still had a question. How does this address serving food and alcohol out on patios outside the actual walls of the structure, I guess?
I believe that it allows it.
Can I interpret, make that interpretation from this section?
I think it, and again, we're not talking about necessarily Crab Apple area, or are you?
Yes.
I understand, I didn't understand.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it would allow you to take it out of the patio, so.
But we, and we talked about what container, the one we had before, as far as labeled or whatever. I guess the question is, if they were at that restaurant, could they, in fact, without having that plastic cup or whatever, could they have open containers sitting out on the patio? Like, because I think that, is that allowed in Alpharetta for people to sit outside the restaurant at a table on the sidewalk?
I'm not sure. I'll find out, for sure. I know they do it in Roswell, but I'm not, I'll have to find out for sure.
I had heard that Alpharetta changed the, allowed for that. And I think that's one of the things some of the vendors had wanted to see.
And I got this from Alpharetta. So I'll, I'll ask them specifically that question. That's a good question.
How about, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Joe.
This could potentially, I mean, this is, this is making or reducing the restrictions that we have in place today, because right now, you can serve alcohol outside, but you have to be, it's really not outside, because it ends up being sort of enclosed.
It is enclosed.
Yeah. It's an outside enclosed area.
Which is the way both Roswell and Alpharetta have gone. So, I mean, if we're going to be competitive for restaurants, we're going to have to allow.
No, I'll all in favor of that, because I always thought we were too restrictive there.
But, go ahead.
I guess that would be the intent, I think, part of the discussion, is getting us so we are competitive, so our restaurants actually offer the same thing and amenities as what other jurisdictions allow.
Well, Roswell seems to be the least restrictive. Have we looked at Roswell's ordinance?
I did, but I will look at it again. I can't recall off the top of my head, because I looked about 30 different ordinances, and they're all very different. So I'll, I'll look at that again and see if I can pull that language into ours.
Just from the appearance anyways, the fact that they serve on sidewalks and parking lots and...
So you're asking the question if they can, and you want to, you do want to allow that? Is that what we're talking about?
I think to be competitive.
Okay.
I guess find out, find out what they allow, and kind of see where you can tailor our somewhere.
Well, and I just want to address this, because I, I mean, I don't know if it would be necessarily exclusive to the Crab Apple area, but this, this code that's been presented to you does allow, right, patio sales, understanding that.
But it has to be enclosed.
Right. It has to be enclosed with some sort of a physical barrier. And of course, it even identifies what the policy reason for that is, of course, so customers don't walk away without having to go through the main area of this, of the, of the consumption.
Well, I guess my point is, particularly with Roswell, they serve on sidewalks right along Canton Street. You'd be driving down the curb there.
Yeah, you can see them right there.
Grab something off the table.
Understand.
I'll look at that.
But I guess what, you need the direction of the council, really, is we want to make this so it's not too restrictive, so that we can be competitive with Alpharetta and Roswell. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes, that's the head of information with it.
Yes.
That's the council, Bill's passing it down. I just tried to quickly give a visual of what that T4, T5, and T4 open area looks like. And that's what I've colored in with my blue pen on there.
Yeah, you stayed within the lines, too.
I did, it's pretty good.
So are you okay with, with that map? Or would, do you want to be a little more restrictive and allow it only in the commercial areas of Crab Apple?
I'm okay.
I'm okay with it. I mean, I just, yeah, I think we've got to be competitive.
You've got to start somewhere, I guess.
Okay.
I just want to follow up, make sure I understood, because I think Bill or somebody asked the question whether or not this applies to all restaurants in...
It's just in the Crab Apple area?
Just in the Crab Apple area.
I've got a question about the map, just looking at it. So, so the T4 restricted area, you know, there are a lot of people that frequent some of those restaurants and then would walk back home to those T4 restricted, that's to the south. They're not, is that something we want to consider, including that?
I mean, to me, it makes sense. If you're, if you're walking from Cans to Village Pizza, or Vintage Pizza, the way it is now, you got to make sure you walk the way down the sidewalk, you don't cut through the back, or else you're in trouble.
And then the, and the T4 areas, Rick, if you just kind of...
Yeah.
And the T4 areas north of Crab Apple Road that are, you know, similarly situated residentially.
Yeah, to me, it seems like the T4 restricted area, which was not previously allowed, maybe should be allowed.
So that's the area that I'm talking about.
Yeah, the T4 restricted.
I'd like to hear from the Crab Apple Community Association, what they think about that, though, to, if we can reach out to them.
I think they'll be very much in favor of that.
They're kind of more the mayor here, so far.
So, so along, along the frontage of Crab Apple Road and then Broadwell Road, would that be allowed there? Because you have that corner, that's Alpharetta. Is it the sidewalk there, or have we seen that?
That's, that's, that's one we're going to have to work through. The four ordinances don't overlay on top of each other almost exactly. There could be a nuance there. And I don't know exactly what that fix is, other than convince Alpharetta to allow us to annex that, even if we, even if they continue to operate it as a Alpharetta facility, it should be, the DIRC should be a part of Milton, so that our laws are the laws that are enforced there. This might be a catalyst to at least push that discussion a little bit further forward than it's been had so far.
But I think regardless, if we allow the T4 restricted to be part of it, it does at least give you a way to go.
Home.
Yeah.
Scoot down the alley.
It looks like we can add T4 restricted to that list. And it should take care of everything. Okay. I believe that is all I have, unless you have any further questions.
Yes, I just, I don't want to create, you know, any unnecessary work or difficulty, but understand that the open container, in terms of, in an area like Crab Apple, being able to walk around, and, you know, that's an advantage. We need to be competitive. I don't know, and I also don't know where to draw the line in what we're talking about today, in terms of how it affects other restaurants within Milton. Because if a restaurant in Crab Apple is going to have an advantage of being able to serve outside without building, you know, the enclosures that we've required in the past, I think that restaurants outside of the Crab Apple area should have that benefit as well. Now, while we can't let them just walk around any street in Milton with an open container, I think there's pieces of what we're doing here in Crab Apple that should be applicable elsewhere.
And I agree with that.
I would, too. So that along Highway 9 or even up at Birmingham Crossroads, if you had an outside patio without a enclosed area.
And I can't put like a real good point on that. So if you guys want to think about it and draft something up, and maybe we can talk about that as well.
What I think, the good news is, is we're starting with, the areas where these restaurants are going to exist, we're already starting with overlays, right? So we have a Highway 9 overlay, a Deer Village, we've got a Birmingham, we've got a Crab Apple overlay. So we've got the base document to start from, that we really just need to look at it visually and kind of, we'll take a shotgun approach at figuring out what the circle looks like, but then we'll bring it to you and say, yeah, that is what we're thinking, or no, that's not what we were thinking.
Along those lines, what's, and maybe it's defined in here, but what is an enclosure? Is it a rail? Or is it, is it, is it soft-sided? Is it, today, does it direct you back?
I think it says in there somewhere, I believe it's...
It says in, the requirement is that the, it should be enclosed by some structure providing for ingress and egress through the main licensed premises. The structure should be a minimum of three feet, three feet above ground level. It does not have to be solid, nor does it have to restrict visibility into or out of the open sales area. It must be permitted and approved by the city's community development department.
So in theory, a patio that you have to go through the restaurant, that has a rail and a roof over it, would be an enclosed space?
Exactly. The point simply being to funnel folks back through the restaurant before they leave.
Gotcha.
Well, it says there's no particular shape to it, so a rope could define a, a limit. That would be the barrier.
Well, it, it does indicate a structure, is the only caveat. But we could change that.
Define a structure.
Yeah. Well, well said.
And I think what, what we're saying is, look to see how we could, how we could relax that a little bit to make it work, see what Roswell does, the way they, they've got it worded, because especially when we get into some of the other restaurants, even outside of Crab Apple, you may have a lot smaller spot that they may want to have a table or two tables outside. And today, they would not be building a structure, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't meet our current code.
Okay. I'll take a look at it.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Do we add an executive session, a motion and vote? Do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
A motion to adjourn to executive session.
To discuss land acquisition.
To discuss land acquisition?
Yes, to discuss land.
Second?
Second, here.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.